Right to call the regular meeting of the Pumas County Council Board, raise to every in the fledge of ladies.
I'd like to leave this here at the back of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. And this nomination.
Thank you.
I'll do it. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Morton.
Here.
Councilmember Piler. Mayor Proten Powers.
Here. Thank you. Item number two, this is the portion of our agenda by our public comment. Anyone in the audience, either online or in the audience, the real audience, the people in the chairs in front of us may speak on any issue that is not on tonight's agenda. And you're limited to five minutes.
You want to take from the audience first and then and then the okay.
Hello, I'm Tracy Ferguson, the Pumas County Planning Director. I wanted to make the council aware that the county of Pumas has executed a consultant agreement with Michael Baker Associates. You may recall through the CARES Act funding, CB two, three monies were allotted both to Pumas County unincorporated area and within the city limits for small businesses. So approximately $490,000 is available, will be available for what we're calling the micro businesses, those that have five or fewer employees, including the owner or owners. And so we are being very close to bringing the guidelines to the, you know, board of supervisors for their approval. Under that MOU that you executed with the board of supervisors, the city of Portola basically delegated all administrative responsibilities in the implementation of that grant. So this hasn't been before you in some time. It was under the previous county administrator Gabriel Heidrich, I believe, and also former city manager Lauren Knox. And so just for your awareness, I will be coming back to you likely in April to then roll this out, have the guidelines, have the application so that those business owners, micro business owners in the city of Portola, city limits, understand the guidelines, the application will be able to come forward should they be eligible.
Very good. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you see, uh, public comment, uh, two people with their hands raised. Um, Ariel.
We will.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just want to first of all, thank the city council and all the city workers for all the work they do. I just wanted to bring up some food for thought real quick, just about the recent train derailment in Ohio. I'd like to suggest maybe that the city start considering monitoring train cars that are passing through and the contents of maybe what's in them and what's being transported. And I'm just thinking about considering the railroad tracks are run adjacent to the river. I'm kind of concerned about a similar situation happening as the Ohio incident in the local area. But I'm also concerned about pesticides that are sprayed from the railroad company onto the tracks. In order to clear vegetation, they spray pesticides and I'm concerned at how close it is to the river. So just something to think about maybe. And in the unlikely event that the river water levels make it as high as the railroad, I'm wondering, is there an emergency plan in place to be able to remove the equipment and trains that are parked in the area possibly? And then also regarding emergency preparedness, I was wondering if the city maybe has plans for emergency situations, how to handle them if they do happen? And maybe how much backup water the city might have in storage? And also isn't enough for all the residents in case we can't use water for drinking, bathing, cleaning, et cetera, you know? And and in the occasion of a mass power outage, I'm wondering if we have plans for facilities prepared and backup generators in place? And then also if maybe we have a backup food pantry in case of trucks can't get here to deliver food. So I'm kind of proposing to the city and residents to maybe form meetings and classes to help prepare for emergency situations as well as educate the residents themselves on, I mean, what they should be doing ahead of time. And that can kind of decrease the potential burdens on the city in the case that there is a situation like that. But I'd also like to maybe propose that instead of community, community gardens, like we've done in the past, that we maybe install geodesic domes as greenhouses, both at CRC and where the middle school used to be, they both have a lot of sun and possibly other locations. And that can educate the youth while also having a backup food supply ready and already established for the worst case scenario for the city. So that can provide food for the schools and possibly an economy where maybe we can sell the produce as well as supply jobs for the city or possibly through the school district. I'm just like brainstorming, there may be residents that are very well educated on agriculture, horticulture, that I'm sure would love to become involved in a project like that. So I was thinking maybe the city might think about considering investing funds in a project like that instead of like a dog park or the gravel grinder event when we can invest in our future food supply, you know, as well as the education of our children, just, you know, food for thought. And it would also be very valuable to be able to educate the youth and residents on how to build geodesic domes, so that way they can start supplying their own food supply themselves, which would, you know, be less of the burden for the city in case if they would have to supply food for the residents. So geodesic domes are just more affordable, easy to build. They cost significantly less than greenhouses in comparison. Their structure, you know, enables you to have a heavy snow load as opposed to traditional greenhouses. So it'd be a year round project for youth and the residents involved. So I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there and thank you for your time and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Ariel. Please check at your convenience back with the city and see what, and with the school district to see what, which of those things are already in place. We can't talk about it in public comment now, but I think you'll be nicely informed. Okay, thank you very much. Now we had another hand up.
Ashley.
Ashley Sims.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I have a few concerns I would like to bring up to the, bring to the council's attention. I would like something done about these items. First, last Wednesday, I attended a Beckworth Fire District public hearing. Mr. Kennedy made public comment saying that Eastern Pumas Fire did not respond to three mutual aid calls and how it was disservice for their people in their district. He also reminded everyone that he was the City of Portola's city manager. I went to the Eastern Pumas Fire Protection District meeting on Monday. The question of why they had missed three mutual aid calls was brought up by the public. Eastern Pumas Fire stated that they had not missed any mutual aid calls and that they cannot prevent rumors from spreading. I do not appreciate the interim city manager cosigning with lies and spreading rumors without finding out the facts first. It really creates unnecessary animosity and hatred between people and districts. Next time, it would be wise to collect the facts about about the situation before speaking. The interim city manager is an amazing example of despicable human existence. That statement alone sounds horrid and degrading and awful. And how dare I say something like that, right? Well, along with spreading rumors, these exact words came out of his mouth towards a member of the public yesterday. It's awful of me to say that about him. Then the behavior should be unacceptable coming from him. It happens repeatedly. I understand that he does have rights to freedom of speech, but there are multiple Supreme Court cases that say government officials do have restrictions. It is outright unacceptable. Also like to bring up that public hearings and public comment periods at government meetings are for the public to speak, not those who are acting in their public official capacity to spread lies. Um, another one of my concerns is that sewage has been spilling into the Feather River. There have been reports to the sheriff's department from Cal OES about it and nothing has been done. I also saw members of the public talking about it on social media, wondering why nothing has been done about it. The Feather River flows through our town, many people fish from it and from to Lake Orville, where it helps provide 27 million people drinking water. Just the thought of the water being contaminated with sewage is disturbing. Um, many, one last thing, many members of the community, including myself, want railroad days back. We do not want to hear the excuses that there's a lack of volunteers. Many people over the last couple of years have expressed interest and they are continuously shut by the city. We do not want to hear that there's not enough money either. If you can waste a total of $75,000 on the dissolve course, that is only open a few months out of the year or put almost $18,000 in for the bike race, you can also afford to bring back our community's longstanding tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Not seeing any hands.
I'd like to do a little point of clarification, just because one of those items, well, it's typical. Uh, the public hearing that was at Beckworth Fire Department, council member Morton was sitting right next to me. She misunderstood like usual. Eastern Pumas, they were talking about the, the issues with, with, you know, uh, lack of volunteers and the reason for consolidation and all that. And I made a point to remind them that indeed on the 15th, uh, Eastern Pumas did not respond to three calls and mutual aid had to be called in from Beckworth. So that was, and that was an obvious concern. So it is true, she just misunderstood the words that came from my mouth.
Okay. All right, item two. Discuss filling vacancy on the city council.
So please bear with me while I try to get through.
Me too.
While I try to get through this, uh, this item and the next item, the, the, this item and the next item will probably discuss. There'll be some discussion regarding both of them right now. So we have to fill the vacancies. Because Tom Cooley passed away on the sixth. So, thank you, Stan. So this is an item obviously that no one wanted to see on an agenda, but it's here and we have to take care of business. Uh, there are three options and Steve, Steve is here. He can correct me if I'm wrong or or maybe someone else can correct me if they think I'm wrong. There are three options that the city of Portola has to consider. One is to have a special election. Uh, most likely that's not something that makes sense. Uh, one, uh, the second option is to not fill the seat at all. And the third option is to fill the seat and request some letters of interest from the public and the, if that's the course that the council takes, and that's typically what the council takes, uh, then the vacancy has to be filled within 60 days of the date of the vacancy and that would have been March 6th. So right now we need to discuss, um, probably a good time to have some comment about Tom himself and and anyone wants to share any of that, uh, but, but the business side of it, uh, we just need to determine what steps we're going to take to fill that vacancy. And I do see Steve Gross's hand up, so I'm just gonna ask him to weigh in to correct me if I was wrong or clarify some stuff.
Yes.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks for recognizing me. I couldn't get my hand signal straight. Uh, so as, as John stated, with respect to the current vacancy, we, we do have three options to, uh, call for a special election, fill by appointment or leaving the seat open until the next general election. The council would need to make a decision within 60 days of the date of the vacancy, uh, which would be May 6th by my calculations, to either call a special election or to, uh, fill it by, by appointment. Uh, if the council doesn't take either of those two actions, then the seat will sit vacant until the next general election. In the past, when we've had vacancies on the council, uh, we've had an item such as this on the agenda for the council to decide uh, whether and how it would like to fill the vacancy. Um, um, agree to a process and timeline. Uh, there are no statutory guidelines or specific requirements as to how you go about uh, filling the vacancy. And so you have, uh, uh, great discretion in how you would do that. Uh, as John indicated, historically, the, the city has, um, laid out, um, a schedule requested, uh, i- if the council would like to fill it by, by appointment, uh, the council would, uh, ask persons interested to be appointed to submit, um, letters of interest stating their uh, qualifications, i.e. that they're a resident of the city and in a, and a registered voter. Provide any background about, um, their experience or what might make them particularly, uh, well suited to be a council member. And then to, uh, conduct interviews and make a selection all within the 60 days. That's just one option, but you're, you're, you're certainly free to choose, uh, other options or methods, uh, to go about this. Be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a clarifying question, Steve. Um, when we, if, if the council decides to, uh, appoint someone to fill the position through letters of interest, uh, does that have to occur on a regular meeting or can it be a special meeting?
Uh, it can be on a special meeting.
Okay.
And, and I should state that, uh, I, I, that the person who is appointed uh, would serve, um, to complete, uh, the term that Tom would have served because he was, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, because he was in the second half of his term.
Yes, yeah. And counsel, the reason I asked that question, if we were to want to, if the council decides to seek letters of interest and, and consider appointing, um, oh, one more clarification, I, I believe, uh, if, if we do seek letters and, and we, and, and the council doesn't feel like whoever submits those letters, uh, is a good fit for the council, for the city of Portola, you don't have to fill the position just because you only have one or two. If we want to stick with a schedule to fill the position before, a- and at a regular meeting, that would have to be April 26th. And, and if, and if that's the case, then we probably should put a deadline like the 15th or something to have letters in for you guys to review, so.
I, I have a question too. So I asked you, Sid, now, if, uh, if we don't have the other council member and we have our meeting and one of us is absent for something, how does that go for the city council?
As long as there's three of us, you still have form, but say if two of us were gone, they could hold them.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
The other thing too, that didn't mention, usually when people write in their letters at the, at the city council meeting, they usually give up and give a little talk too.
Personal interview.
A personal interview by the thing during the group. Which I think is a very important.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, what I'd like to do, uh, since we are on the topic of a vacancy, uh, that was crushing in some ways to us. I'd like to start out and say that I have the privilege and the honor to write the obituary for Tom in concert with his family, with his wife, with his kids and with his sister. And we spent many days, uh, writing and rewriting and editing uh, the information that went into it and covered a tiny fraction of what he's all about. Literally a tiny fraction. And if that was maybe editing very, um, time consuming or difficult because there were no less important or more important pieces of information. Uh, everybody worked with, had great things and I don't know how to express, um, without getting real, real personal. He had no guile. He needed no pat on the back, but he even did. He simply organized, created, made it happen. Was the hardest worker on any project that he worked on. Didn't matter if he was paid unpaid. Nothing mattered except getting the job done. And I better stop there. So I want to, um, not ask the council for remarks and then we'll open it to the audience. If anyone wishes to add.
I guess, I just want to say, um, the way I look at my life and, and, and the way I am here on this earth, you get the opportunity to cross paths with so many people. Tom Cooley and Linda, I've known them when, since I moved into the area twenty somewhat years ago. Then I had the opportunity to be part of the city council. This man, I showed up to his house many times, not knowing what to do. And he's, he's been a mentor to me. And yet I'm blessed that I had the time with him. But I also want to share that there are things that, that they did, the people in the public never would ever know about. I watched this man, he loved to chainsaw. He just had a passion for the chainsaw. And he would saw things down and Linda would drag it to the truck. I will never forget that. I will never, I can just say that I honestly, honestly, truly love this man. And yet I, I hesitate to say because I don't want to put a damper on it, but as being part of this, I've sat in meetings where this man has been called Pinocchio. This man has been called a thief. This man has been called things that went totally against a hundred percent of my grain, knowing this man and what he does. I bring it up only because I have to get it out. But Linda, I see that you're on and I just want you to know how much I love you and I will always love Tom as well. And thank you for the opportunity.
Giving a thumbs up. Anyway. Tom was an amazing person. Absolutely amazing, whether he was doing physical labor, whether he was running a meeting, whether he was doing investigating things and doing research on things. And when he did something, he did it one hundred percent. There was no halfway. There was no anything. And I can't say enough about Tom. He will be missed. I miss him. Linda. I've worked with on many different things also and, uh, he would just be sorely missed by a lot of people here in town. And then, uh, right, so.
I worked with Tom a little bit with, um, when they closed down this city fire department and got to know him a little bit. Um, I was amazed when I read his obituary and all of the things that he has done in his life. And I agree with all the other councilmen, he will be sorely missed.
Now, staff and, and public that are in the room, anyone have any to add? Jason.
I'm Jason Christian, a resident of this town. I met Tom sitting, when I was sitting right where I am now in the audience, and I met Linda that same day and, um, we immediately became friends. And Tom, Tom's my teacher too, the councilmember Piler. Um, he showed me how to operate in the very difficult circumstances of a small rural community of the type that I love so much. And it's been, you know, I've had so many privileges coming, being welcomed into this, this town and getting to know Tom and, you know, all of you people who worked so hard for this town. It's been a privilege, an honor and a great learning experience. And, and I think that, no, I don't use those things. I, I let the tears flow and cleans the soul. Uh, and I'm, I'm just very grateful of, for all of you for the support that you obviously give to Tom over the years. He were, he had friends in the city council and that's a really great thing. So, so thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else in the audience?
And if I could add one more last comment on his behalf, I just wanted to share, Pumas County didn't lose a, a great man. The world did.
Yeah.
The world lost three men.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and he extended, I, well, I swear I won't talk too much more. Um, but he extended his energy beyond the city, beyond his friends, beyond his, his service corps, uh, very active in the Lions, very active in, in Mohawk Valley Restoration Project, very active in whatever he did. But he was also on, uh, LAFCO. He was all LAFCO. Then he became the state representative for Pumas County. And just carried it on. And I am sure that everyone at every level feels the same way we do. He's, he's the guy. He's the one that has all the energies, the one that has great ideas. He just doesn't need any credit for it. And it's, I want to give him all the credit in the world. Um, yes, people online.
I see a few names up there that I know they would want to say something and they want to raise their hands, but they can't like me because they'll just bawl.
Yeah. Well, thank you all for being here and thank you for your, your silent thoughts about him because he deserves some one. Thank you. Um, let's go on to the next item.
Well, I think.
Well, no.
Side.
Does the council think that?
I'd like to make a motion that we fill this position.
And accept letters of venture.
And accept letters of end judgment.
I will second that.
Right, I was just going on back, I guess, going back to the same thing we're talking about. I was off in somewhere else. Thank you so much. I will call, please.
Excuse me.
Yes, that's, go ahead.
We, we should accept public comment, uh, on the motion. And as I understand it, the motion is to fill the vacancy through an appointment. Uh, and, and then perhaps after you have public comment and vote on the motion, then you might talk about uh, the process of how we get there in the timeline for that.
Great. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little indissolute in the moment. Um, so let's call for a public comment on the, um, motion to fill the vacancy through letters of interest or the process there in.
I am not seeing any hands raised anywhere virtually or next door.
Okay.
So, uh, to recap what the steps we should take, I was suggesting April 26th as the day that we would, unless you want to give more time. And if so, we should probably pick some date. I just chose April 15th because that's such a well-known day that you just can't forget.
Get the letters.
You know, that's because it's my mother's birthday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't the other day.
Uh, and I don't know if that works for the council. And then we could agendaize this for the 26th too, if anyone.
Like the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll put that information on our website and.
Yeah.
Give it out to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah. The letters of interest have to be in by 50.
Yeah.
And I see, as I'm looking at names on here as the viewing audience, there's, there's a, there's a Cooley on here that, you know, may want to. That, you know, may want to consider filling.
So with that information. Councilmember Turner, does that still work?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, okay, so let's call the book.
Okay, we'll do a roll call about councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler. Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next item. I I I'd be remiss if I if I didn't just say a few words about Tom. I I know my moment passed, but I'll I'll just exercise a prerogative to step in. I have such deep admiration and respect for Tom. He was a leader amongst leaders. He was thoughtful, he was deliberate, he was considerate, he was kind, he was dedicated. To all of us and to the entire community. He was a hard worker and he really enjoyed what he did, at least what I could tell from my vantage point. And from my vantage point, he was a joy to work with. He asked tough questions, he took hard looks. But he wasn't sharp and he wasn't sharp, he wasn't sharp edged, I should say. He was very bright and very sharp. And he's just just a model leader I think we could all learn from. And and do best to carry on his spirit. And some of his goals for the city. So anyway, it was just a real pleasure and honor to be able to work with him. I only wish it it was longer. So thank you, thanks for giving me a minute.
Thank you.
Hey, I think that. Thumbs up to hearts to sad faces, Linda's. Okay.
Okay, I am for.
Okay.
City council reorganization.
Yes, so we're just going to address the reorganization of the council right now. We're gonna. Deal with committee appointments and everything later. So we basically have to determine now who the mayor is and who the mayor pro tem is and.
If I might, I mean, I guess just to make it quick, I I'd like to make a motion to. Accept Jill Powers as the mayor and Pat Morton as mayor pro tem.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that. I'm not ready for that yet.
Public comment please.
I'm seeing no public comment. Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Morton.
Yes.
Soon to be mayor pro tem, councilmember pilot, yes. Mayor pro tem soon to be mayor Powers.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll move over my chair. You can move over if you want to or stay there.
As girls, we can stick together.
Stand, she said sit over there.
And she wants to be over there. Do what you need to do.
It's probably not that important, we can do it.
It's not, and if you recognize how quick that was with that, there's some meaning behind that. Try to get the flow going in that way. Okay. Rough beginning of the meeting.
Item five, city communications. City council communications committee reports. It was first, anyone on the city council with anything new tonight?
I met with Susan last week. I went down and met her at her office and went over the city budget and. Got re or re. Familiarized with it, having worked here for seven years, but Heidi was already. Knew about it and how it flowed, but it was it was a good meeting and I got some information that I didn't know from Susan.
Thank you.
So also, Plumas County Transportation Meeting was rescheduled.
Yes.
Due to not enough people at that time.
Right.
So I'm meeting them when we reschedule.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Thank you. I attended the Sierra Valley. Fire Department meeting when they held their public hearing and ratified their resolution for the. Merger and I also attended the Beckworth Fire Department meeting when they held their public hearing and did the ratification for the merger. And then everything passed, of course.
You're great, thank you. And I, last night I attended the Plumas County Wildfire Long Term Recovery Plan. But I think we're going to hear a little more about that pretty soon on the agenda. And today I attended the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. Which we passed our major action plan for this coming year, which includes the schools. Big involvement in schools with as well as parent education. And the involvement with the probation department in the schools and it's a wraparound. Program that I think is going to be very effective. And I'll just stop there, stick to the same meeting that Mr. Piler did. For the same reasons, so we're going from there. Staff communications.
No staff communication right now.
City managers report.
How about fire report and sheriff's report? So we know we have someone from air quality, Mickey had anything to report?
Yes.
Right, Mickey Brown of the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District. We basically have one more month for curtailment in April. For the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three winter season. Residents can visit our website, mayordistrict.com or our phone number for the automatic curtailment line, that's eight three two four zero six seven. And those will tell you if it's a curtailment day or not, basically. Just off of forecasted conditions, the atmosphere, if we're going to have a cold weather inversion or not. But so far for March, we've had only one curtailment day. And just for clarifying reasons, when we have a curtailment day. Residents within the city limits are not allowed to burn in non EPA certified woodstoves. So February we had ten, January only four, thirteen for December and fifteen days in November. So that's a total of forty three this season, which is pretty good and it's mostly because we've had such crazy weather, so. Anyway, that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, I can.
Thank you, thanks. Fire report.
I'm not seeing anyone on here that would provide a fire report. And and the same with sheriffs unless I'm missing or someone changed their name or something.
I think, don't they do it on the first of the month and they?
And the sheriff's department's been having. Scheduling issues and manpower change, so we may or may not get.
How the chief is recovering. Did you hear how the chief is recovering now?
Oh, I think he's might be back in town or close to.
So just haven't reported in. Okay, city manager report.
Just real quick, still, we're cobbling together. Broken equipment and. And backhoes and snowplows and everything you can imagine that a rough winter would put on your equipment. So we're we're putting those things back together. We're starting to assess the the damages, the cause from the storms and see if there's anything that's significant enough to. Seek seek assistance through our emergency proclamation. Believe it or not, I still get daily calls regarding IMD issues. That's a hard one to believe. And we're just kind of, I'm also. Trying to be instrumental in helping to make sure that everything is moving forward with the fire reorganization. Especially with the actions of Tom.
Item five, city communications. You know, item six, consent agenda. Consent agenda, these items are usually non-controversial. The city will act on them without discussion. Any council member, staff member or interested party made requests of an item being moved from consent agenda for discussion. Additional budget appropriations will require a fourth fifth roll call vote. And until we. I guess until we seek our fifth member. We'll have a lot to change that fourth fifth to three quarters.
Not sure, but.
Are there any objections to voting on this?
And. Maybe ask for public comment.
Public comment. Seeing none. Now here a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resurrection Number twenty five forty four and to include the minutes for January twenty fifth, twenty three. February twenty second of twenty twenty three and March fourteenth of twenty twenty three.
I hear a second.
A second.
Motion, second roll call please.
Hey, councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
And Mayor Powers.
Yes. Item seven, re-rating. Plumas County twenty twenty one wildfires long-term recovery plan process, I believe we have a presentation. By county planner.
Yes, hello, I'm Tracy Ferguson, I'm the Plumas County Planning Director, happy to be before you. My first time before the council, so great to meet you all and to be there on behalf of Plumas County staff. To communicate our twenty twenty one wildfires long-term recovery plan. This has been informational briefing for you today and I understand that you have the presentation in your packet also here in in the room. So.
Yeah, and if anyone wanted, there's a package there if anyone wanted.
All right, so the the twenty twenty one wildfires long-term recovery plan, it's a countywide effort. And it is covering both the Dixie Fire and the Beckworth Complex Fire. So those were the two devastating fires in the summer of twenty twenty one that hit Plumas County, the Beckworth Fire happening first. And then the Dixie Fire. And so the federally declared declaration happened August twenty fourth of twenty twenty one. We just hit the eighteen month mark of that declaration on February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Morton.
We need not, I don't have a copy of it.
So we have hit and passed the eighteen month date of declaration. So we are, you know, well into the long-term recovery process. But the first slide today is looking at the FEMA disaster continuum. You may have seen this continuum before. It it talks about a course preparedness, needs to be ongoing, that's, you know, pre disaster, the disaster hits and then you have short term. Recovery, you have midterm and then you have long-term recovery. So certainly, you know, right after the fire happened and and while even recovering from the Beckworth Fire and the Dixie Fire. You know, it wasn't till the end of October that the Dixie Fire was really out. So we were, you know, battling the fire at the same time we were recovering. And I do want to mention the Dixie Fire Collaborative was set up in the fall of twenty twenty one, that's the long-term recovery group. These groups are typically, you know, set up post-disaster to help with fire survivors and whatnot. So while the fire was still going, the Dixie Fire Collaborative established to help fire survivors through through the very near-term recovery. But on this continuum, we're in long-term recovery, that's months to years. So understand this is not a, you know, fast process necessarily, although I'll talk about our timeline to get to the long-term recovery plan. Here in in what would be a two-month or excuse me, a two-year mark after the fire. But in in the months and years, whether it's, you know, two years, five years, ten years, twenty years, I mean, you know, and and such a devastating fire. The Dixie Fire, you know, taking out, you know, eighty plus percent of the town of Greenville. Indian Valley or excuse me, Indian Falls Canyon Dam, you know, we had devastation in those communities. And so that long-term years does come into play. So looking at permanent housing solutions, you can see here rebuilding all the infrastructure. The ongoing psychological effects and having support there. So so certainly, you know, the mental health. Is is a crucial aspect and supporting fire survivors and then the economic and and business growth. Getting right back, you know, to business and not forgetting about that economic development piece. While providing for, you know, temporary housing and so forth. And then really, within the recovery, it speaks to, you know, building more resilient as you come back. So in our wildfire recovery process, we have definitely leaned on the state and federal partners that have been with us since the beginning. So Cal OES, the California Office of Emergency Services. You know, steps in and does all of the debris removal and the the hazard tree removal and whatnot, you know, that's all completed at this point. Also FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency comes into play and they've been a great partner. And I'll talk more about how FEMA is continuing to support us. Cal OES has stepped back. Mostly in the planning work as they're on to, you know, the severe weather that we've had in other communities that may need to support. So in the inter-agency coordination through the Cal OES model, we have set up what we call an RSF framework. Or recovery support function. So your slide there, speaking to the RSF. Unit established in twenty eighteen, so very recent. And you'll know that and recall that twenty eighteen was the year in which the town of Paradise had had the fire. So not knowing for certain if that was an outcome of that or whatnot. But certainly since twenty sixteen seventeen throughout the state of California, there has been, you know, many devastating wildfires in in other counties, not just in northern California. So for the state to to say, let's set up this framework for recovery under the California disaster recovery framework. It's a best practice, again, supported by the state, Cal OES and FEMA, the federal partner to assist local jurisdictions like Plumas County. To to really recover and to look at the impacts and then the needs based on those impacts. So I will speak to the community planning and capacity building or what we call CPCB. As the overarching RSF that really helps to ensure Plumas County receives the support. And to implement the long-term recovery plan. I want to recognize John Russell, who is in the audience today. He is under that CPCB FEMA umbrella and John's here in the county, living in Quincy, in my office. On a daily basis with another FEMA planner to help with this long-term recovery plan. So thankfully, the county has had the federal support and not have. Having to spend extra, you know, public dollars on. You know, hiring a consultant and and whatnot. So FEMA's been a great partner through the capacity building side. Knowing that myself as the, you know, one of two planners, I don't know, I'm sure you. In in staffing and capacity, myself as director, I also have a senior planner, so there's two planners in in. Plumas County, the balance of the incorporated area to manage. So that CPCB does help us with disaster impacts and collects data and looks at, you know, all the recovery structures and and so forth. So can't say enough about this framework. The the next slide looks at what we've established based on those RSF functions, working groups. So you'll see the community planning capacity building there at the top of this honeycomb matrix. And then there's five different RSF working groups. So these are the five buckets, again, through the Cal OES model that make most the most sense. To organize ourselves when looking at recovery from disasters. So housing and commercial buildings, economic, health and social services, natural and cultural resources and infrastructure. So those are the five big buckets, most, everything falls under those categories. And we've set up working groups to then, you know, work on the long-term recovery plan. You'll notice the public, the county and DFC, that's Dixie Fire Collaborative in the center, the public certainly being very important in the recovery process. I will mention that Plumas County, you know, does not have to, this is not a requirement of the state or the feds or any local ordinance or whatnot. I mean, this is a proactive, this this long-term recovery plan, a proactive, you know. Part on the county to to write this plan, to have an overall, you know, vision for recovery. To work with the community and and really. to work with the community, and really, we are shepherding this process for the community and want it to be a, you know, county-wide plan. So really, here today, and then before you, so we're telling you are part of the county, you know, Beckworth Complex was the east county area. So wanting to bring you all into the fold under the long-term recovery plan process as well. So we need to add city there, I will make a note, actually, city, there you go, I should have done. All right, so in as much engagement as you'd like, we welcome. So working perhaps with Mr. Kennedy on how the city can be more engaged in the planning process. Okay, so we have our five working groups, they are, you know, you know, stakeholders, organizations, agencies, you know, local folks under these categories, NGOs, and we've been working, again, since, and I'll get to the schedule, but since it was summer of twenty-twenty-two. So quickly, here are the mission statements. After each working group is established, a mission statement was also established for each of the groups to really hone in on, okay, what does housing and commercial buildings do? You know, what is the charge in wildfire recovery, again, through that lens? And I won't read these, you know, verbatim, but, you know, eliminating post-disaster homelessness. So immediately, post-disaster, you know, people lost their homes, over seven hundred structures, you know, and where are they going to live? So, you know, temporary housing and be able to really support in post-disaster homelessness, so we have no homeless. And we've almost, we've really gotten there, I mean, FEMA had the direct housing mission that was approved, and we housed up to twenty-five households, about twenty-five households through that program. And so now that eighteen months has passed and the date of declaration, that all of that is over, and we housed those folks in more permanent housing or other temporary housing. So in housing and commercial buildings, you know, looking at affordable housing stock, workforce housing certainly was a big part of what burned down in Greenville. And then looking at innovative ways to, you know, revitalize commercial and business uses and so forth, and with the veil of, you know, resiliency and sustainability in the rebuilding. Under infrastructure, really looking at rethinking infrastructure and systems, this is really being driven by Dixie Fire Collaborative. So whether it's food systems, energy systems, you know, transportation systems, literally, the restoration of those, but the rethinking of it, it's an opportunity to look at, you know, what is the possibility of how Greenville can rebuild and how Canyon Dam, you know, can come back and so forth. So I think in infrastructure, rethinking it and really looking at, you know, viable, sustainable, you know, resiliency. And we know that the state, I mean, really is that, you know, those buzzwords of resilience and sustainability, we need to define them. But the state looks, you know, in any rebuilding to fund, you know, if the state or feds are going to give money, they want the resiliency, they want the home hardening for infrastructure, infrastructures and sustainability and so forth, looking at Title Twenty-four and Energy Code. So on to economic mission statement, you know, resiliency, and diverse Plumas County creating that atmosphere of economic development for businesses, employment opportunities, for health and social services, improving, not only restoring, but improving public health, healthcare, social services, education, and the natural cultural resources, certainly, you know, the environment, you know, we need to, you know, in this wildfire, I mean, people, property, but the environment and the wildlife, and, you know, the loss and devastation of our forests and those wildlife that were displaced or were killed. So assisting, really looking at both the natural aspect and the environment and then the cultural aspect. Greenville Ranjuria is a part of it, you know, the work, Mighty Summit Consortium. So tribal and cultural resource and aspects are being brought also into the Natural Cultural Resources Working Group to, as we say here, preserve, protect, conserve, rehabilitate, recover, and restore. All right, so looking at some of the key impacts, so really, when, you know, in this plan, what projects will come of it, you know, have to address the impacts. So it is a very sort of deliberate process in orders of operation of, you know, this fire happened, impacts occurred, and then now what are the needs? So key impacts, forty-five percent of the total acreage of the county was burned in the Dixie Fire. We know that it was nearly a million-acre fire, and the balance of that fire occurred in Plumas County, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty acres. So, and looking at the soils, you know, burning to moderate to high severity, over six-hundred thousand of those acres. So really, I mean, getting down into degradation of soil and how we're going to restore these forests is a key to this process. You can see hazard tree removal, twenty, over twenty-one thousand trees came down, and then there it is, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine damaged or destroyed residences. So quite a few, certainly, and one-hundred-and-forty-four commercial buildings, and then six-hundred-and-ninety newly vacant parcels. So you can imagine just, you know, what this looks like in the landscape, and I'm sure if you all have driven through, you know, Greenville and whatnot, you've seen it for yourself. As far as public roads and damages, you know, our Public Works Department, they're going to be last because, of course, you know, PGE or, you know, the Joint Trench Utilities and Frontier and Broadband and Fiber, you know, they're all doing the trench work underground. So the roads will come back last and sidewalks and so forth, but we have a lot to repair. Over a hundred utility ports destroyed, looking at Indian Valley Community Service District particularly, you know, they were hit hard because they, you know, didn't have then those clients or folks that were paying the actual utility costs. So sixty-eight percent decrease in revenues, you know, hit them hard right away, and a decrease in average home sale prices, forty-six percent, and then fair market rents increased, as you can imagine, supply and demand continuing on an estimated one-thousand-six-hundred-eleven net job losses. So you lose those commercial structures, you're losing jobs, that impacts the county, county-wide, it impacts economic development. We know, again, that Greenville had a lot of, you know, affordable housing, workforce housing, where people lived in Greenville, they worked in, you know, maybe Portola or, you know, but primarily Chester and Quincy. So sixty-eight businesses closed, super impactful there, over fifteen million dollars in total verified business losses. So that's just the businesses, fifteen million dollars. County tax revenue was reduced by, you know, roughly half a million dollars, and the highest employment losses were in public administration, transportation, finance, and healthcare. Average home sale prices increased, fair market rents, is that a repeat? At least three-hundred-and-fifty impacted elementary school students, so, you know, the kids, I mean, displaced, and all those in the Greenville Elementary, you know, they came to Quincy and to Chester and whatnot, and then increased for mental health services. And as I mentioned, Greenville Ranjuria is both medical and dental facilities, they were impacted. So people then had to drive, you know, much farther to then receive those medical services. Moving on to the long-term recovery plan and the leadership, so you all know and may know some of these names with the county. There's these icons here, we're tagging icons to the different working groups. So that first one, there's a house, so that's housing and commercial building. Myself, as the planning director, I'm co-chairing that working group with Tyler Pugh, the Pugh family, longtime Indian Valley family, Tyler of LMNOP Design and Build. He, you know, knows building, knows design, knows architecture, whatnot, so he's a great fit for that group with me. Infrastructure is being co-chaired by Supervisor Goss, Kevin Goss of District Two, the district that was most heavily impacted, and also John Manley, who's our Public Works Director. On economic, we have John Stefanik, the Fair Manager, and also Supervisor Engel, Jeff Engel of District Five, looking at our economy and economic development. With Health and Social Services, no surprise, the Social Services Director Neil Caizdo and the Public Health Director Dana Loomis. Then also the Museum Director Paul Russell, under Natural Cultural Resources, and Willow Vera, the Agricultural Commissioner. So there's your leadership with the plan, and in the process, mentioning that Dixie Fire Collaborative, starting fall of twenty-twenty-one, moving into the winter, they did quite a few things with the community, listening sessions, relationship building, needs identification, recovery goals and whatnot. And then now into phase two, you know, the plan itself, as I mentioned, we started last summer, hopefully, you know, will be done this summer, August of twenty-twenty-three, we want to adopt the long-term recovery plan, and that facilitates this big-picture framework, as I discussed, establishes the vision and values for the recovery that really is grassroots from the community, ties it all together with impacts and needs, integrates the community input, identifies project champions, identifies funding for those projects, prioritizes the projects, and then discusses the implementation and maintenance. So we create this plan, the work is not over, the implementation is going to be huge, and as I mentioned, going on for years. So really, having those project champions step up, I will mention, not all projects are going to be county, you know, led, and we have many, many partners out there, and when you look into these projects, there are going to be quite a few non-county projects that we're going to need, have those champions really work together and with us. On the maintenance side, likely, you know, it's a living document, definitely, so two, three years, we'll update it. Today, what we think is a priority, may not be a priority three years from now or five years from now because of funding or community interest or so forth. So in the schedule, February last month, this month, like you said, you know, you were in Benton last night, so we came to the East County area to provide this presentation on vision values and projects. So here we are in March, we're refining based on all community input, we'll come back out to the community in April, mid-April, to basically talk about, here's what we heard, here's how we now prioritize the projects. Again, fifty-four projects are proposed today, will likely get down to twenty or thirty, you know, we really need to hone and refine an understanding, you know, what is the criteria to do that, and what are the most vital projects for the long-term recovery plan? Then based on that, you know, prioritization, we're going to release the public review draft in May, late May, maybe early June. June will come back to the public again, so we're hitting the public three times, early here, then priority of projects, and then actually the full draft plan. So you'll see the vision values, the projects, all that plan implementation and maintenance, and be able to comment on the actual public review draft plan in June. July, we'll do some more refinement, and then again, by August, we'd like the board supervisors to adopt that plan. On the public outreach, quickly, you know, vision values, these are just a couple of slides on, you know, what we asked of the community, and I will note that right now on the Plumas website through this Friday, you know, folks that weren't able to come to the community meetings can go online. Basically, if you go to the Plumas County homepage, scroll way down to the bottom, there's a quick link to twenty-twenty-one wildfires recovery, which gets you to the page where the presentations are there, all the information's there, and there's link to the community survey and voting on all the projects and so forth, so vision and values. So you can, you know, you can still get your comments in virtually, and what we asked of everyone during the workshops was, you know, tell us your twelve preferred projects of the fifty-four. Tell us what your, you know, star project is, what's the project that you want to see happen most? And then if there's a project you don't prefer, let us know that too. So, you know, what's missing, those sorts of questions, so we got some great feedback, we're compiling all of that information, and then, you know, please stay in touch, and I will be in touch with you, I will add the city on that slide to keep you guys in the fold and be back to share this information more. And, you know, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, and, you know, look for that next cycle of community workshops in April, and then the plan, yeah, come late May, June, and supportive communication, can't say that enough. So thank you very much for the time today, I really appreciate it, and any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, I did have a comment that came to me last night, and it reminded me again. Well, Portola's role in Dixie Fire. Everyone on the perimeter and the peripheral services to the event, we housed homeless people. They were in our park, and they impacted us in that way. Our food, we had one church that set up a pretty extensive food pantry for the people in the park. And, but it was by the seat of our pants. It was quick, it was, let's find a place for them, let's figure out how to do this. And with some pre-planning, I'm sure, should another disaster come our way, well, we'll be more prepared. And I think part of a lot of this plan is going to serve the whole county very well. That's my optimistic feeling for it right now. Questions or comments?
I think what you, what you heard is, is talk to people, like Lauren said, when they evacuate, we start coming here, and things you need, like, you know, showers and. And one lady was very nice, that was in the park who was staying there, and she's the one who went and bought snacks and drinks and everything. She had like a little pantry so that the people who were staying in the park didn't have to wait till meal, if you wanted a snack during the day, you could go take out of this pantry. And in the built church, was serving meals at night. So we had a lot of help, but it was last minute, and people just came forward out of the goodness of their heart to do a lot of the work. But there's a lot of things to think of when you go into that, you know, bringing in extra garbage bins and.
It's free thinking. Yeah. Questions or comments from the audits? Yes, Jason.
So, yeah, Dolls were here?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to underline what Bill said, I don't know how this process succeeds without the very active participation of the city of Portola. I'd like to pick three areas where their contributions are particularly valuable. First of all, no planning process involving the Dixie Fire is going to be successful or welcomed by the community unless and until there is full, open, public discussion of the failure us all to remove the slash piles from the fuel treatment works on the hillside above Greenville. Those slash piles were put there by our people, by loggers, some of them residents of Portola. These were outstanding fuel treatment projects, these are the heirs of the Quincy Library Group. We know how to take care of our forests better than anybody in the world because we've been working on this for so long. I came back to Plumas County partly because of the Quincy Library Group. And we need to remember, you know, there were problems with that. And, you know, the involvement of industry has bothered some people. Well, I have not seen, I didn't see, you know, I've only seen some of the stuff here, but in my visits to the governor's, what is it, fire preparedness and, you know, wildfire passports, I've been to three meetings, and I have yet to see anybody from the timber industry. And I, and then they start talking about money, about how we can't afford to do this. Well, it's going to be hard to do it if you systematically exclude for-profit business from the planning of the exercise. You don't need to let the for-profit business dominate. This is the rumor that, you know, SPI owned the Quincy Library Group, that's not the case. And we need to be able to have all the parties involved. Here's a couple, and I say, here's the second piece. So one of the reasons that those slack files were there is because the experiment at Loyalty failed. It would be a good idea for us all, when we're thinking about the economics, to investigate why the experiment at Loyalty failed. If the Loyalty Cogen had been running, they would have had room for those piles, that's why they put the piles there. And this is what we call in the infrastructure industry, a failure of planning. This is on the same level as something I was proud of, the Great Rolling Blackouts of two thousand. Okay, that was a failure of planning in the electric power industry. When the lights went out in Texas and people froze to death, that was because of a failure of planning. And when those slack piles were left on the hillside above Greenville and that town burned up, that was a failure of planning, we cannot do this anymore this way. So Portola is a railroad town. I did my estimates ten years ago. Forest Service agrees that they're maybe on the low side. I've shared them with the council. That if we took care of the forests in our region so the trees would grow old and die of old age, we would maximize forest carbon, we'd employ everybody, and we'd be. We'd employ everybody and we'd be running something on the order of one hundred car train per day. From the biomass that needs to be removed from the national forests and a small number of private forests in this area. And a hundred car train per day requires that the rail yard in Portola be reopened. The previous owners of the Loyalton Cogen engaged in a study with the Union Pacific. They know how much it costs to restore the rail of a link from Loyalton to Portola. Now, Loyalton is not, unfortunately, you know, I'm a native of Loyalton, so I'm going to say this is a good thing, it's not like Plumas County. But in this case, it's a serious defect. With this is one we faced before. The meeting that we had last night in Benton was held in the Grange Hall. The Grange Hall is where the ranchers got together back in the nineteen thirties and formed the Plumas Sierra Rural Electric Cooperative. I'd like to see the PS rec involved as an active member in this because they have access to the tremendous analytic capabilities and planning capabilities of the electric planning industry. We're talking about infrastructure in this country and we shouldn't be thinking about electrifying the rails that come up 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 through Plumas County. The net carbon balance on this, if we don't do it, we're clearly not serious about addressing the climate change crisis. So we need to have at the table either Union Pacific or better yet, since Greenville is also sort of a railroad town. BNSF. BNSF is the owner of the Highline Rail, which is a timber rail. They've got similar interests. Every town along the BNSF Highline shares interest with Portola in in the ways that the rail can serve the of the forests. BNSF is also a member of the Berkshire Hathaway Corporate Family, which includes the Pacific Corp. Utility, which serves loans on the north side and has outstanding relationships with the tribes because they just took down some dams. They also are owners of NV Energy who provides our transmission. These are both entities that have an interest in this and they ought to be involved. And this saying, Portola is where this, we've got the power company, we've got the railroad. And we've got another county that works with us seamlessly. And two counties are always better than what, even when it's tiny and noisy as Sierra County. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Other people, comments? Okay, thank you all.
You have some virtual comment.
Okay.
Ashley Sims.
Ashley Sims, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if that packet that is there with you guys in the council chambers. Will you please go ahead and post that as post-meeting materials? I tried to navigate through the website, it's just super confusing. So I'd like to actually with you guys there. Thank you.
It's also posted right on the city council page. It's available.
Okay.
I'll I'll also make it available on the Plumas County website page, because I do have a a note of this month's meeting, so I will post it there as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Tracy, I just wanted to say thank you for your preparation of a great presentation. You know, it starts. By a presentation, right? And we just continue to go on and just accept life for what it is. And when disaster comes, we were talking about being ready. Where the good thing that I saw in the disaster, every town has it, but because I'm in Portola. People just came out of nowhere and pulled together. And it was just, when you step back and look at that, it's awesome. Because when when people are in need, that's when you see people the closest. In service to others. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on. I made it. This is the twenty twenty-three Lost and Found Gravel Grinder Fund. Discussion, possible action, we'll start with John.
Yeah, so the backup material that you had in your packet was the basically just one sheet. It was the original request from Sierra Butte Trail Stewardship that. Was basically the twenty percent share of cost that the city agreed to with Sierra Butte Trail Stewardship years ago. The that that there's some changes in that request, we'll get to that in in a little bit. So the request is going to be different from what you're looking at. And instead of me trying to articulate what the Sierra Butte Trail Stewardship has done and does and how this event is, I thought we probably just asked the guy who is, you know, may know more about it than anyone else. So that's what Greg Williams is here and is probably going to be able to present. What he needs to present, add some questions to the council, and then we'll we'll move forward after that.
Greg, you're on.
Yante, hello. Thank you, City Council. Just first of all, I appreciate all your public service. And and just continued support of this of this community. Raised both my kids here, love this town. And I poured my heart personally into this place. And so I'm here on behalf of Lost and Found Gravel Race, the festival. And we're holding this on the homelands of the Mountain Mindew and the Washoe Tribes. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And we're trying to grow this event to really bring an economy to Portola and to Eastern Plumas County. And we're doing that pretty effectively, I feel like, you know, this event was growing. And it was a sellout event in two thousand nineteen, and we brought it into the into the town of Portola. Brought camping into town, and then, you know, we felt the effects of COVID. And then we brought it back in two thousand twenty-two, and we brought it through the heart of the Dixon Fire and really showcased kind of the black and the green of the environment. We had almost nine hundred racers that showed up, which felt really good for for a comeback. And just to update you, we have currently almost six hundred riders registered. We're going to cap it at fourteen hundred and ninety-nine racers. We also, out of that, you know, part of this cost share and and we're not, I want to move away from the cost share because it's it's going to. I think just muddy the waters in terms of what we're asking for, support of this event. And ultimately, like, we want the city to be able to recoup those funds through camping. So currently, there's around seven thousand dollars, it's already been accounted for and reserved for for camping. That's what like a third of the third of the event sold out. So we're confident we're going to be able to sell the camping out. Bring people to town. And and I'm just like really proud of the of the effort that we've put into this and really showcase Portola. And being like, like, we're calling the gravel capital of the West. And really trying to bring people here, not just for the event, but really highlight the town. The fact that you can just start your ride from right downtown and access like thousands of miles of dirt roads and adventure. And I think the businesses have all felt the effect of of having this event here. I feel like we're very effective in economic development and marketing the town in a positive way. I'll kind of leave it at that until there's there's questions and then. You know, we did have a conversation about about the amount that we should ask for. And so, you know, I just kind of want to like discuss that comfort level, but also make sure that like the city council is confident and the money that you're that you're providing for this event. And the effort that we're putting out in terms of a five oh one C three nonprofit and really trying to highlight this this region. And then using those funds as well to like help build the Backwood Peak Trail, which is going to be a world-class trail. That's going to be finished this year as a twenty-year project. It got started in two thousand and three. With with some tobacco funds from Eastern Plumas Parks and Rec. You know, so like, we're in for the long haul. We want to, we want to make sure like at the at the end of the day, like, we're proud of all the effort that we put in. And everybody's proud of of what they've contributed as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's take public comment first. Both in the current audience and online. I see two hands.
Yes.
Thank.
Can't tell. Well, I think Ashley Sims was first, so we will.
Okay, Ashley Sims.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to know if. I would like to know what will be the actual, the total cost, the fully burdened cost of the event, including the employees. You know, staff time, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure if you have considered that yet. I would like to also see whatever Mr. Kennedy was speaking about before Mr. Williams started speaking. He said the document you have in front of you is not the actual plan. I think I'm parroting maybe. So I'd like to see that as well. Thank you.
Can I, can I speak to that or is that, no? Okay. We'll be there. Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, okay. Our ask is.
Yeah, well, we could call Winston first.
Did you, did you want to do the public comment then?
Yeah, there's one other roundup, so let's hear from Lindsay. Sorry, Greg.
Thank you. I wanted to comment that I think this event is awesome. I think that what we're getting, the value out of it, is going to be fantastic. The putting it together, the organization, the security, the bathrooms, I think it's going to be great. And I'm very excited about it, and I'm even more excited now that I heard from the representative how he's going to sweeten this even more. Thank you.
Okay, Greg. Go ahead.
Yeah, so our ask is is for sixteen thousand. That's what we, that's, I think it's less than what we asked for last year. Originally, this was a, this was a twenty eighty split cost share agreement. I just feel like rather than coming back every year, you know, this event's going to grow, our organization is going to be able to cover more of the cost. You know, I I feel like it's a fair amount for the city to put in to recoup the cost from camping. And then also, you know, if you just consider the economic development that we're doing as an organization. I hope you're, like, again, I just hope you're proud of that. We are going to make sure that, you know, all the infrastructure is here to support the city, the the bathrooms, the garbage. In in terms of the the city staffing that's required, we did, we are in contract with the event. Organization, company called Breakaway Promotions, they helped us last year. I feel like it reduced a lot of the staff needs on the city as well as on our organization. They're very professional. If there's any shortfalls that that happened last year, we're in communications with John and Todd. To just be like, hey, you guys need to take on more of this. So I feel like this is very much a partnership. And we're going to lean really heavily on Breakaway Promotions, this contractor, to fill any gaps that any of us might have felt in two thousand twenty-two. To make two thousand twenty-three like the best year ever.
So I have a question. You said that the last time, how how many riders did we bring in?
Last year, we were just shy of nine hundred. Okay.
And 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 then this year, we're looking forward to tapping into that.
Yeah, we're going to cap it at fourteen ninety-nine. That's part of our our agreement with Breakaway Promotions. If we go to fifteen hundred, it opens another door of of costs. And we also, we're very, I guess, thoughtful in how we grow this event. You know, we want to see what that feels like, see how the camping works out, see the impacts of the town. Before we just, like, our permits for two thousand people. Want to make sure that, like, everybody that's here has the best time possible and that everybody's safe and it's a great environment for the families. So we we feel really comfortable about going to fourteen ninety-nine. And then, you know, I'd say like, well, let's get there and then let's sit down as a as a partner. And really see like, can we go to sixteen or seventeen, you know, like, how that feel? So I want I want this event to very much grow organically and in partnership with the town, the business owners, the community.
So I guess my thought is is for the city to accommodate enough parking spots to to kind of handle the recoup on our end versus what we're putting in. But again, I I kind of need for it to in as well, to put in her input. But I will say this, ever since that we've been having this event. I consider myself a long-standing resident here. It's awesome to see our quiet town look like a city for so, for a few days. It's awesome to see our businesses in town. Just overwhelmed with business. So I'm all for it.
When I don't know, Greg, if you've had an informal survey. I know of a few, but I I have no data about. At least five people have bought homes. Here. That were in the race and they'd never even, they didn't know where we were. A lot of people don't know where we are. But at least five, but I have no data on how many. It would be wonderful that I collect that sometime. But it's been a, I'm looking on the driver, and they only have one weekend a year. And to produce what it does. Fantastic. I just, I just think it's, and I think you're right, I think it's going to grow. And well, it's growing, there's going to be a few snowmobiles and speeds this year, but I know you'll cross that bridge.
Yeah, we have, we have almost six hundred miles of trail that's under permit, so we have some. We can make some alterations if we need to, but also, you know, it can be a hundred degrees next week. Yeah, we've visited this for, you know, a number of years. Better be dealing with this than than smoke. So, well, if we have to shovel, we'll shovel.
That's right.
So there's another public comment, and then then we'll bring it back to me sharing some actual math regarding the.
Okay. Ariel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ariel again. I was just wondering about. You mentioned earlier that it was part of Maia Do and Indigenous lands. And I was wondering what kind of permissions we got granted from these lands. And when you're considering paving trails and attracting tourism to these trails. I want to consider also the environmental impact on inviting tourists to be able to do that. And then I would also like for you guys to maybe consider with the amount that is being allocated to the event. Again, maybe being considerate to invest it in emergency preparedness for the residents. And then also things like the resource center being recently closed down. Investing in some way to actually accommodate the residents instead of investing it in a event like this. But then also maybe investing in a tourist department or maybe a promotional department to bring in tourism and hiring a specific person for that role. If you're interested in bringing in tourism to be able to encourage that economy, you know, year round. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. That was a.
So I.
Several questions there.
I don't see any other public comment from anyone that, from anyone that hasn't already commented.
So Ashley, you have your hand up.
You want her to?
Sure. Okay.
Thank you. I had one more question. I wanted to know, how much did the city of Portola actually make back? From last year's event? I'm not, I'm not asking about like how much the business is made, but the actual city of Portola, you know.
We'll cover all of that afterwards. I'm not going to answer question to question.
Yeah. Okay, that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to get down to this. I didn't know if. So Ariel did have a, she started talking about some other things, but she had a question regarding the relationship with the local tribal communities, and I would think Greg probably has a response to that.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we're honoring the homelands, bringing these people out, educating them on the cultural, environmental history of this place. I mean, I'm Northern Sierra Mewoc, Deer Creek Band. You know, everything that we do is is very thoughtful. Deer Creek Band, uh, you know, everything that we do is, is very thoughtful and meaningful. Uh, we're not paving any kind of roadways. We're using existing roadways. Uh, really, we're bringing people here to celebrate, uh, the culture of, of the lands. And also encouraging them to come volunteer. Uh, you know, we have, we brought in, uh, over a hundred thousand volunteer hours as our organization. We shared stewardship on public lands. So it's a big part of the programs that we, you know, this event isn't for profit. It's, it's to support our organization, our mission to revitalize mountain communities using trails as a tool. And there's a big education component around this, uh, for adults and for youth and volunteerism. So, you know, I just, I just hope that, um, people understand like we're respectful. And we, we're honoring indigenous people and, uh, and not, not devaluing and we're giving back every, every cent.
Well, and, and just one comment, uh, because I think I've been engaged in every one of the races this year as a supporter. Run a couple of outward, uh, aid stations and so forth, uh, as the city's been, uh, uh, we volunteered to do that, just to set up an aid station way out in the boonies. Uh, one in Genesee Valley one year and went out in Delta Canyon another year and so forth. And the riders, what is, what struck, struck me the most was rider, a rider would say, I never knew anything about this. I signed up because I'm a, uh, biker zealot. Um, that's what I love to do is, is biking. This is my first time in this part of the country and I had no idea how beautiful, how I wanna make this part of my life now because it's something that's magical up here. Especially the people coming up the, the road from Genesee Valley up the slow, slow drive up, up Walker Road, uh, from Walker Mine Road, uh, back into our country. Lush green meadows, even in the devastation of the Dixie Fire. Lush green meadows sitting next to the blackened woods must have been a contrast that people will never forget, ever. And it's just, just magical sometimes.
We are too, uh, encouraging people. We, we're gonna create these, uh, we're calling migration routes, but so people don't have to drive to get here. So there'll be migration routes from, uh, Chico, Susanville, Reno and Truckee, where people can ride to the event bike pack. Um, you know, we'll, we'll give them areas they can camp. Uh, there's a way they can ride the train from, uh, Emeryville up into Reno and Offload. And then we are, um, using Cool Effect to do carbon offset. So everybody that registers is contributing to, uh, offset their carbon to get here. So again, trying to be as thoughtful as we possibly can with this event.
Appreciate it. Yes.
So let's do a little recap here. Um, so, uh, I just want the council and the public to know that we already budgeted for this event when we adopted the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So technically, this didn't even have to get on the agenda. Um, it didn't need any additional approval. Um, but I just feel like it's a good idea since it's out of the ordinary expense and, and it is an event that, uh, that, you know, needs a little more, uh, conversation and publicity. So, uh, I just wanted to make that a point. It's already in the budget. Okay? Um, however, when we, when I did get the first, uh, request for the change, I noticed it was more than last year, a little bit more than the year before. So I contacted Greg and said, hey, how, uh, it, I know this is a, you know, a, a cost of share. So when you guys are planning for more people and you need more resources, it's gonna cost a little more. So that makes our twenty percent go a little higher as well. But we discussed how, uh, how, how obvious it was to, um, for the future, when we're budgeting in July for basically almost twelve months away. And if we're not locked into something or better, better idea of what it's going to be, um, it might be a little more challenging. And this year would have made it a little more challenging because we have a certain budget that, uh, that includes the, the amount to the organization and our staff time. And, you know, that's a, that's a difficult one to, to wrangle, but we have a certain budget. So it's no, uh, it's no mystery, no secret that from my time in this county as a elected dude and just involved community member that I think that Sierra Butte Trail Stewardship is the only organization, not to take anything away from Chambers or anything else. They are the only, only organization that is measurable and that actually creates tourism here, other than Mother Nature Golf Course Owners, you know, uh, restaurants and all that. So I am their biggest fan in terms of economic development. But I'm also the city manager here and I have to, I have a fiduciary obligation to watch our money, watch our expenses and make sure that the citizens of Portola are, uh, you know, the services are provided like we should. So that's what prompted my phone call. Um, and luckily, uh, Greg is a reasonable individual with the best of intentions. Uh, when we were talking about this, I didn't even have to say it. Greg said, how about we try to cap it? We both said, how about we cap it from what last year's was of sixteen thousand? So instead of seventeen thousand eight hundred or whatever it is, it's at sixteen thousand. Share a little bit more and then I'll shut up. Last year, the camping revenue was eight thousand thirty-five dollars. Okay? So you have, now, that's not bad for two years prior to being shut down, little recovery. The year before that was eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars. First two years was low because it kind of started. So I foresee a, more than half of what we're gonna be expending to, to be recouped. Also, like Greg mentioned, last year they, uh, hired that organization. What was it?
Breakaway.
Yeah, Breakaway. Breakaway took, Kelly's here. She probably knows too, but they took a lot off of our plate as county staff in terms of the event and traffic control and, and other items. They, they did a lot to help relieve the pressures of, of, of staff. So, um, and that's obviously gonna be the plan this year. So there we are. There's some of the history of the revenue created. It was already in the budget, but we wanted to bring it to you anyway. And we're gonna be asking for less than what they asked for. So.
Very good. I believe you answered the questions that I had, John. I was gonna ask, um, how much the past funding was, which you did. Um, I was gonna ask if there's any other organizations that help with this. And it sounds like stewardship does twenty percent and we do eighty. Is that the way I understand it? Or is it vice versa? We do twenty percent. Okay.
Well, yeah, that was just an old, uh, formula that used, the city used with Sierra Butte to, for a cost of share of, of, of the items that are listed there.
Okay.
Twenty percent of the cost of those items. They have way more cost of other things.
Okay. And then I was gonna ask if we, uh, charged for camping, which you answered that. And we recoup that money for the people that camp inside the city.
Yep.
And along the, um, river trail.
Yep.
Okay. River walk on the Wednesday River. And that's, Ellen, that's right. One year we had Baldwin too, because we had some of the campers.
Okay.
Um, that, that was my question. And what's the date of the gravel grinder?
June third.
Thank you.
So people will start camping, um, you know, that Thursday.
Okay.
And then some of them stay through Monday.
I did hear some comments from last year that the businesses were not prepared for the number of people that we had and that there was two-hour waits to get into the restaurant. Have you reached out to them to let them know? Cause I know a lot of them are having staff, have staffing issues.
Last year, there was, Pat Morton makes that her personal mission. There, there was, yeah, there was.
The gas stations, the grocery stores. And I didn't meet all the businesses. Somebody was closed every, you know, but I went around personally.
Yeah.
And did that. And some of them said they had received letters from the peer stewardship and some of them said they didn't. And that's why after the first place I happened to go to said they happened. So I thought, okay, well, somehow, you know, something's missing in here. And I would be more than happy to help with that. I just, I'm just wondering if, if it hadn't addressed because
Yeah, there was.
The things that I had heard.
There was a very robust outreach and whether the businesses were able to accommodate, you know, the, there's a lot of people showing up. So it's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, I might add to that. If it's the local businesses that have ran into that issue, they should be ready.
Yeah.
If they're not, and they have, and they can't accommodate the overflow, it's their loss.
Well, we have to let the businesses know ahead of time, you know, if, if they're gonna be part of this process, that they have a chance to order whatever they think they're gonna need. And one thing that's really important is the gas stations, because the gas stations have run out of gas.
Ooh, yeah, they didn't, they didn't this last year. And we, and we did make the rounds. Um, I, I think just.
One gas station, the other gas station didn't.
Bringing the event back after two years, people were kind of like, oh yeah, maybe we won't be busy, you know? Um, I, I think it's just, you know, we do an event in Downeyville. It's the busiest weekend. Like those businesses, um, some wouldn't survive without that impact.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I think it was just everybody getting familiar again with, with what this event brings and then, uh, being ready, you know, as best they can, like, you know, bring your kids to help run your business, like invite your family, that's, you know, uh, all hands on deck.
We need to be prepared.
Well, right.
And my favorite anecdote, um, the first year that the High Sierra Music Festival was run out of Bear Valley and came to Quincy to the fairgrounds. Every merchant in Quincy said, oh my God, it's horrible. These people are just gonna overrun the town and ruin everything and be terrible. And they bought everything there was to buy in town. And the second year when it went before the supervisors, they did the same thing. These people said, no, we can't have these crazy people and all this bunch of music lovers, imagine. And the merchant said, hold on. Wait just a minute. Um, they are the ones that allowed Safeway and American Valley Hardware to survive. And have done so every year since. And it's the same thing. We are optimistic and we are ready to go as far as supporting everything you're, you're gonna do for us. And I really appreciate it.
Well, I'm not seeing any more public comment.
Okay.
I can just comment real quick. I volunteered last year with the Denver Fire Department on one of the medic stations. And I could just say, I think that maybe Ariel had commented like what the plan was for emergencies. And the fire department is so well organized and so precise in like their structure with having people at different facilities, with having staff volunteers, I could say, available to respond to ordinary calls. So they do an outstanding job and the city and the fire department take, like, everything into consideration. So.
Great, thank you for having me. Yeah, okay. So we're ready to vote on the expenditure.
I'll make a motion to, uh, fund, uh, sixteen thousand dollars for the, uh, lost and found gravel grinder festival of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and second, uh, public comment.
I think we.
Seeing none.
Yep.
All right. Roll call please.
Okay, we'll continue the roll call, but I think, uh, uh, we'll talk to Steve later because I don't know that we have to do roll calls all the time now since COVID thing is over. But right now, uh, council member Turner. Council member Piler, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
And Mayor Powers.
Yes, and I think it is expenditures. Greg, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. See ya.
Number nine, public comment on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget preparation. My name is Susan. Is on the line. Susan Scott, our finance officer. Susan.
Good evening. This is the public opportunity. Well, there's a public opportunity anytime, but this is, uh, one of the two times that we actually put it on the agenda for any public comment before we work on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The next, um, uh, public comment is at the meeting on April twelfth. So if we have anybody who would like to make a comment, uh, please do so.
Okay. I see.
Ashley, I think.
Ashley Sims.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I would like to see some funding put to the side for rubber days to come back next year. That is all. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Couldn't understand what you said.
Couldn't understand what you said.
Gray Road Days next year. And I believe from past Gray Road Days, they were costing about over a hundred thousand dollars on their days. And, uh, that's kind of, you know, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, stopped because it was just too expensive and
we can get some numbers out there.
Yeah, yeah. I think we can probably look back and
Yeah.
See how much. Yeah. We were paying for it, but it was a lot. Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely changed over the years. We, uh, don't have this, really the staff to pull the whole event together, event planning as, uh, Sierra Butte knows is a, is a big thing. Um, and so at one point quite a few years ago, we actually had to hire an event planner to do that. And then we luckily had some folks come in and they volunteered to run it for a while. Um, but the city really hasn't, um, funded that event for quite some time.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Susan.
Any other, any other comment on our upcoming budget? If not, we certainly will take comment again on April twelfth.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, um, tonight's meeting is adjourned. I want to thank the public for being here.
Nice to be here. Yeah.